So, we've met that bar. We can make the donation. We just wanted to make sure before it was said and done and everything had been signed and then we have to back off and say, yeah, we can't really do that. We can't. I've talked to Dr. Williams about it already and assured him that this is what we want to do. So, tonight, uh, tonight, we're proposing an ordinance to solidify this donation. We will then revisit it. Uh, we'll vote on it tonight. If it passes, then we'll vote on it again in two weeks. We'll sign it over and it'll be done. So, uh, any questions around that? Anything I missed there?
No, sir.
There's a lot of words to say. It's good.
Counselor, any discussion?
Any comments?
Please, please, please.
Alright. If not, I will entertain a motion to take the recommendation by city, uh, city manager John Beckmeyer to, uh, proceed forward with the donation of real property to Odessa College Downtown. To Odessa College for the Odessa College Downtown Park.
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez. A second, second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, unanimous. We're gonna move on to item twenty-one. Consider approval of the city manager's recommendation for discontinuing Downtown Inc. at the apartment with the city of Odessa. We have some people that want to, uh, come, uh, speak, um, address the council, item twenty-one. Mary? Good afternoon, Mary. Just give us, uh, your full name for the record and you, uh, then we'll proceed with, uh, with the time. Go ahead.
I, I'm Mary Ness. Um, I'm here to talk about, in general, your support for downtown Odessa. In three years, Odessa will be a hundred years old. And this seems like the time to move forward with things that can make the downtown part of Odessa something that we can all be proud of. My husband and I have lived here since nineteen eighty and I can with all assurance tell you that we never went downtown unless it was to take care of some civic matter like being on a jury. You know, something of that nature, maybe a visit to a hospital. There was no reason to go downtown and we just didn't. On Friday or Saturday night, we usually drove to Midland and had dinner because that was where the good places were to go to eat for a very, very long time. Or we went to a football game if the team was red and white. Anyway, I want to tell you that whenever the Marriott was built and the actor theater was improved, that opened up downtown to people like us who've lived here for a very long time. We started out by going to the, the free concerts, the hot summer nights at the actor theater. They were wonderful. And then after that, Odessa Arts joined in partnership and they have the First Friday. How many of you have been to a First Friday?
We've been there. We've been, we've all been there.
Okay, good. Because there's nothing better than that to see what Odessa really is up to. There's things for kids to do, grownups, young adults, teenagers. It's a wonderful place to be. And I think that we need to think seriously about what we want that to look like in three years. Is it gonna be something that you've pulled back from? Taken leadership out of, taking funding away from? Or is it gonna be something you can move forward with to build Odessa into the city that it should be? Sometimes when I meet people who've moved away from Odessa, they'll say, you're still there? And I say, yes, we've re, we've had our careers here, our life, we've retired here and we plan to stay here. But we also want to be sure that this is a place that lives into the future with quality of life issues that will attract young professionals to come here and work. People to build their homes and stick with us. That's very, very important. The downtown area, the Marriott Hotel, the actor theater, that's where Odessa's putting its best foot forward. And then on Friday nights, the, uh, First Friday event is something anybody can enjoy. And I think that's something to think about as you move forward in your leadership positions for Odessa. Where are you taking us? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kira? Just to take your full name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Kira Bowen.
Thank you.
Um, I am on the board of directors for DOI and I'm here to share our positive experience with, um, downtown and also ask a few questions about the future implications of just downtown Odessa in general. Um, downtown Odessa serves as the heart of our community. It embodies our culture, history, and economic potential. Not only is downtown Odessa the hub of our infrastructure, housing the courthouse, health department, post office, hospitals, library, police station, and other city departments. And there are also many local and diverse businesses thriving in this area. In an effort to address concerns regarding the discontinuation of DOI being a city department, I'm here to advocate, advocate for the continuation of efforts to revitalize our downtown area because despite the new businesses and investments that we've had going on downtown, we're not quite there yet. And we still have room for improvement. And so my first question is who is in, who's in charge of to continue the work that downtown has been doing? Um, grants have brought new people in, this is a, uh, new businesses in, this is a positive development that illustrates the need for a cohesive strategy to ensure continued growth while at the same time fostering a sense of community in the downtown area. And we have downtown neighbors and we want to participate in events with them. And so who will continue that work in downtown Odessa as we move forward? Also, how, um, how will downtown continue to grow? Downtown Odessa has been the location of many investments by nonprofits and philanthropists, but this should not be seen as a substitute for a comprehensive downtown revitalization effort. And we still need some financial support to continue growing, uh, downtown and our, we need a multifaceted approach that addresses issues like, uh, planning and executing coordinated events. Events like the Firecracker Fandango, our parade, um, they bring tens of thousands of people into downtown's footprint. This is a substantial task, uh, coordinating anywhere between five and eight different city departments. And, and there's considerable, considerable funds that we've used from the city to do those things. So how will these events continue? Um, the big question is why? Uh, is then why is the continuation of revitalization of downtown important? And perhaps the most compelling reason to continue the revitalization efforts of downtown Odessa is the overwhelming support for downtown revitalization among the community as a whole. The numbers don't lie. The people consistently show up. Odessans, uh, value downtown as a cultural and innovative hub of our city. Uh, we know they're eager to see downtown thrive because they show up. Thousands of people join us here in downtown repeatedly through the year, not just once or twice a year, but repeatedly.
Go and finish your thought.
Oh, thank you. Um, actually, I wanted to touch on something you said.
No, no, just finish your thought. We had someone, we got more people to, to speak. Let her finish her thought. Should we go? You'll, you'll, you're good. Well, I'll get to you. You'll, you'll get to speak too. So, let, go ahead, keep going.
Okay. And so I was gonna say, um, when? When will this shift take effect? And what are the implications for the current contracts like the low riders against bullying, Firecracker Fandango, um, Easter egg hunt, all the things that we have planned? That, that was the win.
Okay. Well, we, we got two minutes for you. Do you wanna go ahead and give her more time? You're good? Okay, you got three more minutes.
Um, so the, my, in conclusion, uh, the partnership between DOI and the city has done great things and I hope that as a community, we can find a way to continue that good work even though we don't have that formal partnership. We're discussing not having a formal partnership anymore. Um, and then really quick, I wanted to piggyback off of something that you said.
No, you got three minutes.
Um, the city of Odessa invests in growing people. And, um, part of that great work that I've been talking about is the grants. We're investing in people whenever we give those grants. They're giving regular people a hand up to do more for our community, just like you were saying. And that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That was good. Uh, Chris?
Alright, Chris Bowen.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, me and my wife own Homemade Wines here in downtown Odessa. Uh, we are both born and raised native Odessans and we are trying to do our part to help improve the community in which we are raising our family, including contributing to the ongoing efforts to bring new life into the downtown area. When we learned about the grants available to help businesses renovate buildings downtown, we scheduled a build, uh, meeting with Downtown Odessa Inc. And the meeting began, our downtown Odessa adventure. We would never have been able to open a location downtown without DOI's financial and moral support. We were very encouraged by DOI's enthusiasm for our project and their commitment to supporting local businesses like ours. Their expertise and guidance were invaluable as we navigated the complexities of the grant application process. We knew that receiving the grant would not only provide the financial support we needed to renovate our building, but was also a vote of confidence for our contribution to downtown Odessa. Luckily, every DOI representative, including the directors and board members, went out of their way to walk us through every step of the difficult journey. They helped us make connections as we were building our renovation team of architects, contractors, and other community advisors. Then they followed up regularly as we transformed our space into a vibrant hub for customers, art lovers, tourists, and locals. From painstakingly restoring the building's historic facade, brick by brick, to updating the entirety of plumbing and electrical to modernizing the interior layout, every detail was carefully considered to create a welcoming and functional space that would attract local and out-of-town visitors and contribute to the revitalization of our downtown area. Throughout the renovation, renovation process, we felt deep sense of pride and gratitude for support we received from ODC, DOI, and the community as a whole. Every day, as we welcome customers into our beautiful renovated space, we are filled with optimism for our, for the future of the vibrant, thriving downtown Odessa that we can all be proud of. Because we have been through it, other businesses reach out to us for information regarding the infrastructure, the facade grants. While we will continue to advocate for new businesses to join us downtown to continue the wave of economic growth we are currently experiencing, we are not sure what to tell them as far as the shift about to occur. Who will they reach out to if they would like information on grants? Do they contact ODC or someone else?
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, so... I'm, I'm gonna go ahead. Mr. Beckmeyer, I'm gonna give it to you. Uh, you know, we... Craig, do you just wanna come and address us? No, uh, this is it. This is the last one. Just, let's think, your full name, just for the record.
Yeah, Craig Stover. Um, I, I... Time's up. Well, I, it's quick. I feel like the attorney earlier, I'm, I'm out of order and, and didn't read the motion right and, and didn't get the agenda right. Um, I wanted to, to speak as, as a board member on, on behalf of Elizabeth and Martina who have worked tirelessly for downtown Odessa and have, have taken roles that are, are tricky and difficult to navigate and, uh, sit in positions that they answer to a nonprofit board, they answer to city council, they answer to, uh, a city manager. They're, it, it, it's a tough role. And what they have, uh, done and continue to do to support the organization tells me that, that they are valuable city of Odessa employees. They have the best interest of the city at heart. And I hope whatever decisions are made, uh, include the fact that they are, ha, have that at their heart and, and the politics stays out of it, uh, that they want to be here, that they want to continue their service to the city. And, uh, that's why I chose to speak on nineteen. I know, again, that it got a little out of order. I'm, I misunderstood that, uh, but that's, that's what I wanted to, to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beckmeyer?
Okay. And I'll, I'll, I appreciate Craig, uh, giving away part of his time there. So, I'll address that first. When we started looking at this, the first thing we looked at was nobody loses their job. That is absolutely, uh, I went to Mr. Burnow and said, we gotta make sure that that is off the table. If somebody doesn't want to be with the city, that's one thing, but anybody that would, if this recommendation is accepted, anybody that wants to be is gonna be at the city. So, that was first and foremost. And I appreciate all your questions. They're good questions and they're ones that, that we've had to answer through this whole process. And those of you in Internet land, if, I apologize when I look away and you can't hear me. Most people can't hear me anyhow. The, the why, the biggest why that started this was, right now, downtown Odessa gets funded to the tune of around five hundred thousand a year. Four hundred and fifty thousand of that is through hotel occupancy tax. It doesn't qualify. I'm just gonna be, I'm just gonna be candid. It doesn't qualify for that. It has been funded since, I guess, twenty nineteen, it looks like, partially on that. So... That's one of the why. That's one of the why.
You can get some more time.
I would entertain, no. So, that's one of the why. The win, it's gonna take more than a month to unwind this. It's gonna take some time. A lot of the questions, I'm very fortunate that the council just asked me a lot of the same questions. So, the hot funds aren't legal. I'm not asking for them back, but the hot funds aren't legal. The events will be continued. The events will be, just like the departments, I mean, all of you all have seen me say more than one time, we have, we're going through all the departments, looking for relevancy, efficiencies, things like that. Events will be examined, but there's no chopping block here that says an event is going away. We're looking at things like parks for some of the events because they've been involved with Elizabeth in the past in putting in on some of these events. And maybe it's the hillbilly country and made parks and recreations. Events tend to be recreation. We have an events coordinator position now that will help coordinate these events, but it'll also be coordinating for the whole city events because we have a lot of events. We wanna put to rest the idea that we're abandoning downtown. We fully support the revitalization of downtown. It's something that needs to be done. I began working here in Odessa in twenty seventeen and the difference between then and now, I've said publicly over and over again for the last six months, is palatable. It's so much better than what it was. We're not recommending that DOI goes away at all. It needs to be the organization that it was. It was a Main Street, it was, I believe, originally Main Street Odessa. Y'all still have the five oh one C three somewhere around two thousand and five. Approximately March twenty eighth, uh, it became Downtown Odessa Inc. I believe it was brought into the city around twenty nineteen and it needs to be DOI. We didn't do, do this over a week's worth of work and say, well, this is where we're coming from. The task force went out and interviewed other cities with like organizations to see what they're doing. And of the cities that we talked to, only one had a development organization like this within the city, but none of them were being funded through hot funds because they understood hot funds can't fund this. And if y'all wanna talk about criteria on that, we can at some point. I can keep y'all up here all night if y'all want, but I'll try not to. So, moving on. We had money set aside for downtown, uh, vitali, revitalization. We have, uh, approximately three point five million right now that we're looking at. We'll be working with the development, uh, department here within the city to help move that, move that forward. Let's see, what I'm skipping here on this, uh, as far as the grants go. DOI still should be pushing people as a board to the, to ODC for these facade grants. And ODC, I'm glad we've got Mr. Mansky here tonight. ODC should be helping them just like, just like they are right now. Uh, I don't believe we have a chamber representative here, but I know in many, uh, we'll say Mr. Mansky can serve both, uh, both, both positions tonight. Many towns that I've been at, the chamber plays a big part in getting the facade grants. Not getting the facade grants, but saying, okay, here's where you need to go for that. So, it's a, it's a team effort as far as that goes. Already covered the win. I would encourage you all to look at the packet that was provided with the agenda packet from the, from the task force and, uh, take a look at that. So, my recommendation to the council tonight, unless there's any, any questions before I move on to that.
Well, open up. If anybody's wishing to address the council, any questions on any of the statements in the presentation that the city manager has done, can do so by coming forward. Counsel, do you have any questions or statements? Or do you wanna go ahead and let, uh, city manager, uh, go through with his recommendation?
I wanted to just, just share a few words about it also. I understand that this is, um, this is a big topic for the city of Odessa. You know, we, especially with downtown being in my district, um, this is something that I really wanna see move forward also. I wanna see down, that downtown revitalized and the regrowth and rebirth happen down there. And it is happening. Um, we recently started doing some more events down there. This past Christmas season, we had the casitas down there. And, um, you know, we're, we're not gonna discourage or discount any of those in the future. We're gonna, we're gonna continue to move forward with those. So, um, please, guys, if y'all do have any comments or any questions, this is the time to ask them because this is the place where you're gonna get the answers for them. So, if we, if there's anything that you don't have, uh, a clear sense of what's going on about downtown, what we're doing, you know, the main reason we're doing this is because, uh, as Mr. Beckmeyer said, the way we're funding it right now is just not correct. It's just not the right way to do it. We, there could be, you know, future litigation, lawsuits brought up about that, and, uh, we're just trying to avoid that. The last thing we wanna do is to go out and have to ask for that money back. And that's, nobody wins in that situation. So, that's what we're trying to avoid right now. And, um, I think one of the questions that you asked, Kira, was, um, how, how is it gonna be funded? For right now, the, some of the events that we're gonna be going through is, um, we'll, we'll have to absorb it with the general funds. But, you know, the events that are happening, we're not gonna do away with it. As Councilman, uh, Vasquez mentioned earlier, that's part of a quality of life in Odessa. Now, we can't do away with those events because, um, people look forward to them. Me and my family go to those events. We go to First Fridays. We go to the, um, to the events that are happening downtown. We enjoy doing that. We go, we like going to those concerts and, um, you know, unfortunately, my kids are too cool and too old now to go do the Easter egg hunts, but, uh, we don't do that anymore. But, um, it is, it is good to, um, be able, be able to offer the city of Odessa and the citizens events like this. And downtown Odessa is kind of, uh, the heartbeat of the city. And, um, so in no way, shape, or form or fashion are we gonna, um, stop with the revitalization efforts for downtown. As Mr. Beckmeyer also mentioned, you know, just wanna reiterate that, that we do have money allocated for projects happening downtown. So, um, you know, we just, especially being in my district, I'm a little biased, but I see a great and bright future for downtown. You know, we have some projects in store that, um, are gonna happen here soon and, um, you know, just, I'm excited for it, for the, uh, future of it, so.
And also, please don't hesitate to contact me. It's better to contact me directly too than for me to have to read comments on Facebook that says I'm bad.
Counselor, any other comments? Well, let me say this, um, being part of, of, of the board, both council and the board on, uh, Main Street Odessa, um, I don't know how many times I have to defend this, um, about how I am not supportive of downtown. Let me tell you, I was there in nineteen ninety-five. I was on that board. I was twenty-nine years old. And I've never pointed the finger at anybody saying, I didn't see you there. Whether you came early, you came late, you cared about the city, and we take that very serious. I think a lot of people that contacted me with this has been on failed to see the report. One of the things that, um, back in twenty twenty, that was highly reported, that I wanted to be able to do a forensic audit. And somebody told me, well, be careful what you ask for. We're here and we're going department by department by department. And city manager laid it out correctly of what the results are coming. More than six months ago, we were in a workshop where we were informed by Austin that the methodology that the city was using in funding programs, this is not just the only one. It gets, can, it's being called to question. City council, we needed to know exactly what that meant. We didn't have an answer. We needed to find an answer. And so, I think Mr. Beckmeyer said it right. We've been funding things that don't fit one criteria. And that criteria, when it comes to hotel motel tax, is that every expenditure must promote tourism and convention. In the end, we gotta put heads in bets. We, as a council, and I've done this several times, but we've discussed it several times, that we don't have a criteria when we fund a program and they come back for more. Uh, how many heads and bets are they putting? We don't have a criteria. There are material available to us, but we've never put it into play and into action. That's one of the things that we are doing. This is why we created the task, uh, a, a review committee. Two members of the council sitting on those with other members of the finance. And so there are checklists that everyone's gonna have to go through. It will give future councils a baseline to base on continue to fund or not to fund if they fit, that'll hit that criteria. We have a program that's coming here in the near future with the sports complex that fits it perfectly. So, here, here, here's the dwelling in which we're in. Main Street, a, a, and I'll tell you, I, I wanna answer, um, the citizen that talked about downtown visitation. So, we reached out to our retail coach that is doing a lot of our demographics for what we're doing as far as our retail. This is what helped us tremendously be able to compete with big corporations like Bass Pro. So, Fandango for last year, citizen street, the citizens, Odessa citizens, the attendance for the Fourth of July, the Fandango was way not even a ten thousand. Workers were shot, were right under forty thousand. Visitors from outside was about a hundred and forty thousand. There's one problem with this, this statistic. We're not overnight. We can't, we can't get, we can't solidify that these are overnight. Huge amount of numbers. But the problem is, is that they're not supporting the first criteria in that, once again, the promotion, the tourism, and conventions. In the end, are we putting heads in bets? That becomes questionable. The other high one, once again, we wind up having, uh, just shy of twenty thousand. This was in, uh, back in November to December. Citizens are about right under twenty thousand, forty thousand for, uh, workers, and over a hundred and forty thousand for visitors. This was the new initiative that we did for, uh, Christmas was the casitas. Very popular. With a lot of criticism. They're saying it was too long, but it wound up bringing a lot of people in. They were curious, they wanted to see. This is people visiting the entire downtown. By no means necessary, anybody in the city is abandoning this. We just have, you know, the, here's the, the question it comes down to. Are we properly putting in place hotel motel tax? And when Scott Guzla spoke, fore-spoke to us, way over six to eight months ago, we, there were specific questions to, specific things had been done and he called it all to question, which, hey, we're gonna have to review this. In the review, it found out and financed, you know, the, the, the team, the, the task force actually went and they asked a hard question. In the review, it found out, and finance, you know, the, the, the team, the, the task force actually went and they asked the hard questions. Does it come back to the i- item one, promotion, tourism, convention, and, and tourism? We're funding things that are, it's, 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 it's amazing, I think Mr. Beckmeyer said that, uh, you spoke to the director of, uh, the agriculture department, said you'd be amazed how many things we fund that have nothing to do with agriculture. And that's fine if it fits within your criteria, but when it comes to question that, are we in a legal, a situation where we could be asked to go back and ask every organization to pay back every penny? What's the hit to the organizations? Not in trouble, but do we continue to operate this? I think we heard something about abandoning downtown, abandoning the future, where are we leaning to? That has not changed. We have to restructure and find other ways of how we wind up funding events, and they have, each one has to be scrutinized in its own merit. Do we do that under a general fund? That creates another issue, where do we find that kind of funding? So, you know, the, a lot of the questions that were asked out here, were asked inside. Every member of this council asked those hard questions. We needed those days because we're, we're just, we, we're concerned too, but we also know we have some wonderful events going on, we wanna continue it, but we want to be legal also. I think it's really important that no one's losing their job here, no one's abandoning anybody. Now, if anybody wants to decide not to be part of the city, you know, once again, that's up to them, but that was the first criteria. This is something that wasn't discussed overnight, this has been quite a little bit of time. We were gonna look at it, and that evaluation across the city is still gonna happen department by department. When we come across these and the findings are brought back to the council, we have to weigh them all. And we have to look at the whole thing. The, the risk to the city, to the citizens, to the taxpayer, the validity of the program and the programs and events. They all have to be hand in hand. Our decisions have to be made, but somebody has to make them. You know, I've been a huge holdout for this because I've got a lot of sweat equity into the Fourth of July. I remember me and Mitch Fields and Lori Gray sat down there at Municipal, Municipal Plaza, and we planned out the Fandango, we didn't even have an A, fireworks inside the city weren't even legal. This was back way more than twenty-five years ago. Seen it grow to what it's become. It's become a staple of the city as a parade, as, um, as Starbright Village and the casitas. So, do we wanna continue that tradition? Yes. I think this, this last couple of years, we've had the Fourth of July, that city's not had nothing to do with it, and it's been the downtown lines. We want to continue those partnerships. There was, uh, there was some comments, you know, there's some text messages from, uh, from the board members, I, I wanted to discuss them in person with them. I didn't wanna get, go back in text messages, I would, you know, not, not everybody could be here. So, invited them to be able to sit down and look at item per item, how, you know, what their concerns were. But I think there was an overs- over sense that we're just abandoning everything and just throwing it out, and where are we going, like, we don't have a plan. I don't think anybody here would move forward without not having a plan. And, um, so this is not a knee-jerk reaction, this is not just, hey, we're slashing, and nothing's gonna be happening. One thing we're already here, there's nothing to do in Odessa, Texas. And so, um, but one of the consistencies, it's been just three staples. We're not abandoning it in any form or fashion. But we do have to rally, any good business has to reevaluate, look at their bottom line, and find a way to continue what they're doing and doing efficiently, and improving and building on top of that. This is something, this is simply what we're trying to do. So, that's, that's the last thing I got to say. So, I added my, uh, some numbers, they're good numbers, some good information, but one thing it doesn't do is, once again, doesn't go back to the very first thing that Scott Guzla told us, and it is, expenditures must support those three items. And, uh, and I think that we're, i- i- it's just hard to quantify. It, it, I mean, it, it's a hard, hard pill to swallow when you're faced with it, try to find ways to make it work. We just kept hitting the roadblock back to number one. Every time I proposed something to Mr. Beckmeyer, he goes, does it go back to the item one? Item one, item one. I mean, we, we're like half a dozen scenarios, and each one fell short of the item one. And, uh, when, when you're faced with that, you have to admit, okay, we have to, we have to restructure it. If, if that's what the council chooses to do. So, uh, I'll yield the, uh, the floor to anyone on the council, if they have any comments, um, or discussion.
What I've heard you say, Mr. Mayor, is that for five years, we funded Downtown Odessa Inc. to the tune of about five hundred thousand a year to include, uh, money side of general fund, four hundred and fifty thousand from hot funds, which are not eligible to be done for that. So, for five years, two and a half million dollars.
Yes.
Yeah. And this was illegal, according to the, the hot funds. Just wanted to clarify that.
To, to give that first criteria pretty much verbatim, first and every expenditure must directly, not indirectly, not kind of directly, enhance and promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. Once you get past that hurdle, then you have nine other, nine other criteria you can fall into, arts, history, things like that. To piggyback a little bit off of what the mayor was saying, I'm glad he brought up, uh, Mr. Joslo. The task force has recommended and is planning on, and Mr. Joslo has agreed to come do a workshop for people, organizations that would like to receive hot funds. Because that's partially our fault. We need to be telling people how they qualify. So, if you come in for five years and we give you, you know, let's say it's just a couple thousand dollars for five years, but it supports your event, then we tell you you don't qualify, that's a pretty hard pill to swallow. So, we should've, we should've done that to begin with. That's our, that may not be this specific council's failure, but it's our responsibility. We can't look back. So, if there's any other questions, I'll try to answer them, if not, I'll make my recommendation.
Okay. Can't say any other discussion?
You know, I'd like to, just to mention to the director of DOI, um, Elizabeth. Uh, thank you for what you've done, you've done a terrific job. The, um, you know, to be candid and honest too, you have to make a decision too, if you want to run the organization as it is, without the city funding, continue it on, offer donations, or come to work for us. But I wanted to thank, thank you, thank you. Well, I mean, I mean, continue working for us.
She is a city employee.
Yes, you're a city.
Yeah.
But to continue that as a, as a, as a separate entity, or to, uh, continue with the city. But thank you for what you've done.
Can't say any other comments? No discussion? Item twenty-one, city manager's recommendation for discontinuing Downtown Inc. as a department within the City of Odessa. I think it ties the city with the organization, sixty, sixty thousand.
Let me, uh, make my recommendation.
Go ahead.
While DOI serves an important role in, in that of the city, it's recommended that the operating agreement, which is what brought DOI into the city, that ma- that it maintains with the city be ended and DOI allowed to operate as an independent organization.
As the city's make recommendation, council, any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mato, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Bitterly aye?
Have to abstain.
All those against.
All those against.
Abstain, to abstain.
Go, I'm sorry.
Abstain, abstain.
To abstentions. All those against? Motion passes four to no objections and two abstentions. Put in there very hesitant bitterly. So, um, item twenty-two, seeing that there is no more business before the city council, I entertain a motion for adjournment. The council member.
I shall move.
Voskas, do I have a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Mato, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against, indicating by saying aye?